And I'd like to take a second to thank the town employees, the people that worked on their days off, that postponed vacations, that worked extended hours, that worked in multiple positions, the people that answered the phone calls, the people that normally don't answer the phone calls that answer the phone calls. I'm proud of the work of all you did, and I know everybody else here is too, and you really should be thankful, or we should be thankful, and you guys should be proud of the fact of the great job that you all did. There's too many people to name. You'd have to go by departments, the fire department, the police department, the DPW department. I'm looking at Sheila across the way, you know, she's the conduit to so much of the communication that goes on in Town Hall. You did a great job, and it really is, as Joe was saying, we're fortunate to have the employees that we have here working for us through an emergency like this. The, I guess, I'll go on a second more before I pass along to you guys. I would say that the majority of the people in the town handled this situation well. Obviously, everyone was frustrated, everybody was inconvenienced, but for the most part, ninety X percent of the people muddled through it. Unfortunately, there's a small percentage of people who take it to an extreme and somehow treat town employees rudely, yell, threaten, and name-call. And it's not a lot, but it's a few, and it sticks out. And what I'd like to just ask everybody is to treat the town employees in a professional manner. They're on your side, they're trying to solve the problems as best as they can, and a lot of times, they're your neighbor. You know, they are in the same situation that you are. So, in the future, again, treat them professionally. You wouldn't put up with it, we wouldn't put up with it, and they shouldn't have to put up with it either. Again, they're doing their best to try and alleviate the situation and make it go as smoothly as possible. I think also the chief could probably, I just alluded to a second ago, it was a tropical storm. The, what was the highest gusts were in the high forties, I think? You said they were measured?
I think the, from what I had heard, was probably maybe even in the fifties.
Right.
Sixty-two on Third Cliff.
Sixty-two on Third Cliff. So, really, if it was a real hurricane, it would've been, you know, up to twice as much as that. So, I think this is a learning experience for the town. I think we're gonna look back at what we did and see what we can do better. Certainly, communication was an issue that we had to deal with in terms of phone being down, internet being down, and how do we communicate to each other and to the residents. And I think hopefully, everybody is looking at it internally and saying, what do I have to do as a homeowner in this town to deal with a situation like this? We're still in hurricane season, all you have to do is watch the weather to see something else stirring up down there in the Gulf or in the Pacific headed up this way. So, hopefully, we won't get anything else, but, you know, hopefully, this is an opportunity for the town and for residents to look at how to handle these situations. Again, I know that we'll be discussing it with the chief and with Tricia and everybody else to figure out what we can do better in the future, you know, once we get through all of the stuff that we're dealing with. I've been yapping a bit. Anybody else want to add anything regarding the storm?
Yeah, I do, actually, if anybody else, just before I did. I just wanted to say, actually concur with what you're saying with the town employees. You know, we opened up the transfer station, we also had employees going out dealing with trees down. Fire did an excellent job, police did too, both surveilling the neighborhoods with the loss of electricity. So, it was a real town effort, which, you know, a lot of people don't realize. A lot of new issues were brought to the forefront. You know, the last time we lost electricity for an extended period of time was about twenty years ago, and of course, at that time, with new technology creates new issues. People have their cellphones, has to be charged. People have emails in their computers, can't use it without electricity. Whereas twenty years ago, you had your telephone, telephone would work because you didn't have to have electricity because of the wiring. So, it was a lot easier to get communication if the telephone lines weren't down. We're very fortunate and blessed that, you know, this wasn't January, February, or December in the colder months, because by with the lack of electricity, it was much more bearable. Plus, it wasn't hot and humid like it was in the middle of July. So, I think as a town, we were fortunate. And, you know, the only thing that I certainly would raise, and I certainly was curious was, is that, you know, projections. I'm glad to see that Representative Cantwell's here, because in December Cantwell, Representative Cantwell, along with Town Administrator, really were vigilant in trying to make sure that we had National Grid here, and they finally responded. And then we had a hearing here with respect to National Grid's poor response in December. As a result, they were penalized and they had to pay a penalty. To my chagrin, looking at all the data that was coming forward, it was, I was surprised to see that Situate, number one, had the largest, one of the largest percentages of people without electricity. Number two, it remained that way and actually was disproportionate by the end of the week. And I have to tell you right now, I certainly think it's suspect, as a board member, and I think this board should take a look at it in the future, to say, you know, why is it that our town, after having gone through what it went through back in December, ended up getting, being the last one? I heard rumors that it was because they were trying to deal with the bigger bang for the buck, the bigger population with people. Fair enough, I understand that if that's legitimate. But then I found out rumors had it that they were trying to open up areas that had schools that opened sooner than the town of Situate. All this is innuendo and speculative, but I think it draws the question that I think this board needs to tackle in the future with National Grid and say, why is it that Situate, as of Friday, had one quarter of its residents without electricity? And I think that's awful, I think it's ridiculous that National Grid did that without some explanations. And I just think we as a board need to ask that of them in the future. I raise it now, but I have to say, you know, everybody dealt with it. I think it was a great opportunity to get through this bad situation, given the weather, and everybody stepped up. But I have to say, National Grid was a no-show for most of the week, and, you know, any event. That was my comments on it, and I just wanted to share it with the board.
Anything else? John, as you know, they, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sean.
If I could, if I was just gonna let Rick go first. If it's all right with you, I just would like to name one person, all right? And I know, but it's important, and that's Tricia. Tricia was supposed to go on vacation on Friday. I just want people to know, because we all got a lot of phone calls, you know, what's the town doing and so forth? And I, you know, and after things settled down a little bit and got my thoughts together, I said, well, first of all, our Town Administrator was supposed to go away on Friday. She didn't leave till Monday. President of National Grid, the woman took off to Hawaii, didn't care too much about it, then decided to come home. But, you know, that's where it starts, and I couldn't agree with you more, Tony, that, you know, the police and fire and DPW, they've done a fantastic job, but there's only so much you can do when these wires are live without causing a lot of problems. And I would like to discuss it a little bit further at another meeting, you know, a lot of people had comments and thoughts and things like that that I'd like to, you know, explore a little further, you know? So, and hopefully, we can, you know, Representative Cantwell will be able to come back at some time and, you know, we can discuss a little further. Like John said, I just, again, we weren't, it was everywhere, but still, it was very frustrating for a lot of people.
Sure was. And just to add on a couple of things, Tricia, on vacation, was calling me and emailing me every day, so there was constant communication. And the chief did an unbelievable job in stepping into two roles of Town Administrator and Police Chief in an emergency. So, I know you're saying you don't think it's a big deal, but you handled it well and you communicated well, although there wasn't a lot to communicate at times, you know, you did a great job as well. And John brought up Representative Cantwell, he was on conference calls every day with National Grid, doing whatever he could to get resources down to this town to get us moving quicker and getting people restored quicker. So, thank you for all the work you did as well. Rick?
I just wanted to chime in. I agree with the spectrum of comments here about the people in town, the people in Town Hall, and all the employees, and what Sean was saying about Tricia. I agree across the board with the comments, and I too look forward to having discussions with National Grid.
Yep. And there's a forum for that. We just got an email a while ago with the stuff to fill out, to give them feedback, and, you know, there will be a procedure, as always, that goes down to this and...
Just to jump in, I just, I think you all said it very well, and I couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Jim, did you want to add anything at this point? Any?
Sure. Just very briefly, the main purpose I came was to say Joe.
I said, "That's what I'm doing."
And by the way, Joe, if I may, at one point, Joe and I attended a very historic moment just last year, the year before, the Unitarian Church, if you recall, was having their, I think it was like their 200th anniversary of this church.
Three hundred. Three hundred.
I cut off in a century, did I?
Three hundred and fifty, I think.
But at the event, they were talking how difficult it was, of how people would go to church, and that there was no heat, so they would have to bring things to put in their feet so they'd get warm, and there were no lights, and they talked how difficult that was, and how storms would come, and they're saying how bad it was. And you remember, I was joking, saying, I nudged Joe, and he said, "It wasn't that bad, really." I was a celebrity then.
It just feels that way, that's all.
But for our purpose, to echo what you were saying, Situate was so well-prepared for our professionals, the chief steward here, chief judge, who had a loss in the family in the midst of this, Trish, who I didn't even know was on vacation, because I was calling and she was always responding and helping to coordinate matters, and Tony, and yourself, because every day, when you were calling, saying, these are certain sections that are still without power. One, they had one note, is through Tony, there were priorities given to National Grid at the very beginning, I think Sunday before the storm hit, and three of the priorities, after getting the roads cleared and making sure that the chief of E-911 was up so that we had power. After that, the senior housing was one of the earliest priorities that this board made as a priority, that Trish made as a priority, to make sure that our seniors in some of the locations, whether it was Wheeler, it was Lincoln, and Central, folks who have oxygen tanks, people who can't get around very easily, and it was extremely upsetting that that, it wasn't until Wednesday that two of them came online. Thursday was at Central Park, Chief, as you know, you were sending people over. So, that is something, we certainly, Chief, with your suggestion and Trish, having an immediate debrief of how, I think the town did an excellent job, but we certainly can always look for ways to perhaps improve how we do things together. But the clear need is for National Grid to do a better job responding to our town after just being fined about $2.2 million because of the poor response back in December and things. John, when you were the chair, right here, calling them on the carpet, for them to again look like they weren't responding in the most expeditious manner is just unacceptable. That being said, not only should people be kind to the workers for the town who did a great job, but the National Grid people who responded, the linemen, line men and folks, they did a Herculean effort within, the people who came and just with your direction, Chief, and others, the linemen who were out there working did a great job. So, we want to make sure people are aware to direct their acts. And there will be, as a final thing, there are gonna be, at the very least, meetings, if not hearings, where we'll be able to have this information brought. The Department of Public Utilities is a group, Jane Burwick, who you and I spoke to, Trish, the day after the storm in December, we've already spoken to her again. There will be a review of their response to make sure that it was appropriate under, or in the circumstances, and there will be, John, ways to address why Situate has always, or in this case, seemed to have the line chair people who were out there again. So, I thank you for everyone's efforts here, mostly Joe. Welcome back with thrilled to see you again, and look forward to many more meetings with you.
Thank you.
Chief, before we move on, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, just, you know, one of the points that Representative Cantwell, he was in on all-week conference calls, and he represented our town and Marshall very well. And, you know, obviously, they had, after the storm in December, they made a lot of promises, and a lot of them didn't keep. You know, I think there's poor planning, and their, obviously, the mutual aid system didn't work, and it wasn't until really, because it was Friday, that started to see really a lot of people around from Canada, or, you know, some of the places. And I think it caused their maintenance program into quite a deep, a lot more of them around town, the overhead, the, you know, things have grown up around the lines, and you can see that too, but you can see it all on Twitter, you're out there, but not too much locally, so, you know. And Representative Cantwell was right, it wasn't believable when the line crews did get into town, and those poor guys, they're the ones that being thrown to the wolves by, you know, obviously, higher-ups in the company that have chosen to take a different approach to all things. So, you know, obviously, yeah, there's some things, and, you know, we're gonna sit down and talk about all this, and, you know, there's some things, we're pretty limited in what we could do, that, obviously, when the internet and Gmail and everything is, you know, we're kind of back to more primitive means of communicating with people, you know, which we did, we, you know, when the internet did come up, we posted, we were in contact with W A T D and the, but obviously, I'm sure that there are people that weren't open to many good suggestions. And I can't say enough about all the town departments, and in particular Sheila and Christine that did work in these offices here, that, you know, when, you know, it's for us, I mean, it's, you know, we ask people, please don't call us, we don't know when the power's gonna come back, you know, I don't honestly, you know, as it turned out, they told us things that were totally not correct, you know, so, but, you know, for the most, ninety-eight percent of the people were fine, like you referred to, you know, so, it can get a little abusive and you can, believe me, you know, I don't want to leave anybody out, but in particular, those two folks that were answering the phones and the swatmen's in the Town Administrator's office, but my guys and my people, and Fire and DPW, and all the town departments that chipped in and got the job done, you know.
Great. You did a great job. Zach, just a quick question, are we live?
No, I couldn't go live because I can't get this door open, so...
Okay. So, we're taping and we'll replay it?
It'll be replayed.
Wonderful. Getting texts, I mean, so many people watch us on a regular basis, phones going crazy.
You're getting texts that say, where are you? Oh, that's too much. That's just great.
So, again, with the storm, we will look at it internally, what the town of Situate can do, we'll address National Grid, and what our relationship with there is. But again, know that everyone here did the best that they could. The town is not responsible for the electricity going out to its citizens, although we are here to support it, and clearly, National Grid was overwhelmed by this storm. Want to move on to the next?
Sure.
Great. Number three, walk-in period. Is anyone here for a walk-in? Ms. Burbine.
Anne Burbine, Tenpenny Chris Road. I am the acting chair of Social Coalition, and I had given the chairman a letter, and I understand with all of the what-have-you that we've gone through over the last week or so, I had hoped we'd been on the agenda tonight, and that didn't happen. Social Coalition is concerned about the Ford River Bridge. As a matter of fact, there was an editorial in the Ledger on Saturday, and it's, Department of Transportation wants a bridge that is 272 feet tall. The neighbors want a bridge that's 72 feet tall. Department of Transportation wants a bridge that costs $70 million more. As the Ledger pointed out, we, you know, we build a Ford, not a Cadillac. So, the Social Coalition is having a forum about this issue on the 22nd of September at the Hingham Town Hall. A letter will be going out to Mass Department of Transportation, which I, as acting chair, will sign. There are a number of municipalities that may be listed. I know that you can't vote on this, but just, I'm letting you know that the letter will be going out over my signature, just to let you be aware. It's the Social Coalition. So, there you have it. Any questions?
No, Anne and I have spoke about this, as, obviously, the storm has kind of taken precedent on it. We are meeting on the 21st, so we can get some sort of letter signed if we need to to show this...
No, we don't really. I've talked to the, to our administrative person at M A P C. It's going out under the auspices of the Social Coalition, of which we are members. So, but I just wanted to keep you...
Yeah, that's great.
In the know. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Thanks, Anne. That temporary bridge has been there for what, eight years now?
Something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
Are there any other walk-ins?
It's gonna be a lot longer.
Okay. We have a short agenda tonight. Move on to number three, which is the Comoviculars, all kinds of alcoholic beverage relations for Seventeen New Driftway, H D B A Backyard Burger Bar. Come on up. Good evening. If you could just introduce yourselves and give your address.
I'm Bob Burwick, trustee of Green Bush Realty Trust, owner of the building at Seventeen New Driftway. This is my future tenant, hopefully.
Joan Wilson, a Clemore Terrace Situate.
Great. So, you're here before us to get a liquor license for a restaurant, The Hamburger Bar?
Backyard Burger Bar.
Hamburger. Want to tell us a little bit about the establishment and what your plans are, and...
Mr. Vignali, if I may? Just one thing, we're talking about Raymond's Paints?
Yes.
Okay. Just so everybody knows, because the address, you know, might not be that helpful, so...
Good point.
Okay, great, thanks.
Well, I'm gonna be open for lunch and dinner. I'm gonna be open five days a week, close Mondays and Tuesdays, you know, when I open up late fall. And I'm gonna have all-natural, no antibiotics, no hormones, the food, all the foods that I'm gonna be serving. It's gonna be very different than everybody, anybody else has in Situate.
How's it gonna be different?
The atmosphere, it's gonna be a little funky. It's gonna have just a bunch of different stuff inside.
What do you think your clientele is?
I'm aiming to get, you know, thirties, not...
So, would you consider it more of a restaurant or more of a bar?
I'd say both. I won't know till I get there, but I'm hoping that it's equally, you know, bar crowded and dinner.
Like a pub?
Yeah, pub.
And again, this is at Raymond's?
Yes.
You recently purchased Raymond's Paint, did you own it before?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the ownership is not changing.
Of the building itself, right.
Reconfigured.
Great. Let me pass it on down the line here for questions, and then we can...
Yeah, just a quick question, I appreciate the packet you all gave us with the, you know, general idea, I'm not gonna hold you to this exact sign, but, you know, sort of gets the gestalt of the thing across in the menu. Unfortunately, I started reading this around four o'clock in the afternoon the other day, which, well, you know, got me all hungry and so on. Tony asked an interesting question about, you see yourselves more as a bar or a restaurant, and for me, there's no right answer to that, but I'm just curious, because I was looking at the plans, and I don't see a lot of tables that are not associated with a bar unless I'm misreading this. And again, there's no right answer, in my eyes, I'm not personally angling for one way or the other, but I'm just curious, because, just so I know what we're discussing about.
Well, there's twenty seats at the bar, and then forty-four, you know, seats, including with the tables and chairs.
Oh, there's forty-four around there?
Yes. Yeah, want me to bring a set machine?
Yeah, it's about twelve booths, if you go around the perimeter.
So, those are all the booths, like, one, two, three? Okay.
And then to the left of the men's room, around to ladies' room, and around that corner as well.
Those fifty-four, those numbers fifty-fours? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Looks like you have forty-eight tables.
Forty-eight seats, yeah.
Forty-eight seats.
Yeah, okay. All right, cool. And then the only other question I had was, I appreciate the clarification on that, I'm not used to looking at plans like that. If it's a plan of a ship, I do all right, but not on a filming. We got a letter, a copy of a letter from Al Bangert, head of DPW, addressed to you, addressed to you, Mr. Burwick, about, I am receiving the planning board's approval of site plan administrative review for all this sort of stuff. And it talks about a change in usage on the number of sewer units, because obviously, the number of people is gonna go up compared to what it used to be. And I guess my question is, is so, when this says, basically, the expansion of the number of people going in there requires a certain number of sewer units, and each sewer unit is about thirteen and a half thousand dollars, and so it adds up to nine times that, which is $109,500. I don't know how to reconcile all this. I got two moving pieces here.
We're in shock over that letter as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And my engineer, Greg Morse, has sent a letter to Mr. Bangert with some information he has researched, and we're addressing that, and requesting some relief.
Understandable.
From DPW.
Yeah.
Short of that, we may be back here to seek relief with you.
Understood. Yeah, because we're the sewer commissioners and the water commissioners, so...
Right.
Yeah, somehow that's gonna end up here.
That's almost a deal breaker, that letter. And we're still reacting to it.
Sure. And I notice this is a very recent letter as well. So, overall, I like the idea. I like the idea of what they're doing. I think, you know, the more people we bring down into the village and that general area, you know, I'm in favor of the plan and all this sort of stuff. Because of this letter, I don't feel I can move ahead on this tonight until this gets resolved, but I'm willing to hear other things. It's just that there's another moving piece on this, just because it's not as simple as that. But just, I want to reassure you, overall, I really like this idea. I think it's a nice plan. I like the menu. I like the location, particularly as we try to build up Green Bush, this adds a little more variety into the Green Bush area. And I think it's a good location, near the train station, you know, there's a whole bunch of good things going on this. But I just, with this other moving piece in there, I don't know what to do until I get some more guidance. That's just where I am at this point, and I'm completely willing to be...
Great.
Be reeducated on this.
John, any...
Not right now, just...
Sean, any?
I was gonna go last. It's, there's no doubt, I had to run out and grab my phone, but, you know, the sewer usage is gonna go up without a doubt. But like as Rick said, you know, this is a great thing for Green Bush, it'd be a great thing for the harbor, and it'd be a great thing for North Situate, you know? I'm sitting at home wondering, you know, you know, thinking about this, and I look out in the audience and I don't see any of the butters, all right? That, to me, would really sway me one way or the other, if I lived around this, and not seeing any. I think they've all been notified, am I correct, by green cards?
Right.
And not seeing anyone here tells me that they're in favor of it. So, who, you know, if they're in favor of it, I think it's a great idea. Just wonder, I wonder, you know, is there gonna be enough parking? But that's really not for us to decide, you know?
Fifty-one parking spaces.
And out front is still gonna be a dance studio?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I look forward to it. I think it's great. If you think you can do it, you know, good luck. This is what we need, this is what the Economic Development Company is looking, you know, the committee, they're looking for stuff like this. We need to help them, figure out a way to make it, get it done. We talk about doing all this stuff, and here they are, willing to do it.
Right.
And we gotta help them. If, you know, unless, I mean, you know, unless we see a bunch of red flags, but you know what, good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Doherty?
Again, I share everyone's enthusiasm for the idea and the restaurant. The issue on the sewer betterment fees is a legitimate one, unfortunately. As you said yourself, I mean, it's almost a deal breaker in your eyes, and in our eyes, I think it's, certainly not a deal breaker, that's your situation, but it's something we have to resolve before we can move forward. So, the sooner that's resolved, the better it's gonna be for us and you and the new owners. So, again, I don't know what, back and forth with letters and all that, but I think the board will probably want to see some resolution to that situation, because that's a precedent that we don't want to set here tonight, you know, allowing this to go through with that hanging over our heads. So, that's the way I feel. The idea's fine, I can't see any reason why I wouldn't vote for it, but let's get that issue in my minds, squared away.
What's, if you're already given a liquor license, Ms. Wilson, what are the hours of operation, looking for beer and wine, or all kinds?
Oh, oh, well, twelve to nine during the week, and twelve to ten on weekends.
Okay. So, I think I saw that you're looking to open up at 11:30 during the weekdays, but at least...
Yeah, 11:30, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay. So, just to be able to cover the times of operation...
I think it's Sunday, 12, because I know you can't serve liquor before noon, so...
And it's only for five days that you're seeking?
When I first open, but then I'm gonna be open six days a week, I'm definitely gonna be closed one day a week.
So, if you're given by this board a five-day liquor license, that would be acceptable for now, and then can come back to the board if you're... So if you're be given by this board a five-day liquor license, that would be acceptable for now, and then can come back to the board if you're to open up for a sixth day?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my, the way I look at it is, is that, um, you know, it's in the business district, this is a business. Um, it's a restaurant. I've seen the operations of the restaurant they're running in, in Pembroke, it's order, uh, it's well-run, it's well, uh, you know, the menu, the food, the decor, um, and it's not a bar. I've seen the former restaurant they used to own on, um, Front Street, which was Riva. It was well-done. It was originally, um, the Catch, what was it called?
Daily Catch.
The Daily Catch, and prior, you know, they opened up and made it a, a really nice-looking restaurant, did a well job, a, a good job and well-done. And I think they've proven themselves that they know how to run a business, they know how to make sure it doesn't turn into a bar, and, uh, you know, make it a nice restaurant with food. You're, you're, you're trying to do something that is somewhat unique. You know, I, I commend you for it, and I certainly support it wholeheartedly. You know, the issue on the sewer is another issue. It could create a problem, I don't know, but at this point, I, I would certainly be supportive of it. I know there are issues of traffic and issues about parking. I, I have to say, I think parking may be a problem. That's an issue with the landlord. It's also an issue with hammerheads out in front, um, and that's gonna be an issue.
Yeah.
That's gonna have to work itself out. And as far as the traffic goes, I know that the, um, railway station was put in under a traffic study. It was expecting to have at least three-quarters, or if not, um, two-thirds more traffic. And that hasn't come to fruition, so I don't think that's gonna be an issue of having sixty or fifty-one cars at max parked there. You're saying you have forty-eight seats for booths, you got twenty around the bar. Um, if it were the other way around, I'd be a little bit more worried that it's more of a bar. But knowing your operations, I think it works.
Yeah, we have a lot of customers, they just like sitting at the bar, you know, it's, people like the, the bar atmosphere, I guess.
It's not like, um, you're trying to do something that's a little more, um, not just, like I say, it is a hamburger, or that's what you're trying, but you're trying to upgrade it to something that's much more, um, healthier. And I, again, it's gonna attract a certain element of people who are looking for that type, as opposed to, give me a Mickey D's or, uh, you know, a burger at a bar. So I, I would, I would support it. I think the, um, other issue, obviously, is not before us at this time, but I'd certainly would address it as a future issue. But for now, I, I, I have no problems with, with doing it. That's my two cents.
Great. Um, just to add to some of the comments, I, I think, it, as, as I think Rick mentioned, it doesn't matter whether it's a bar or a restaurant. I think the perception was, there's a hamburger place coming to Raymond's Paint, which makes you think it's a place where you're gonna bring your kids to get burgers. And just by looking at the plans, you know, the floor plan, it's more of a bar. I mean, I was thinking, is it just beer and wine? Is it full alcohol? Is it a burger place? And it's, no, it's more of an adult place than the bar takes up probably just as much square footage as, as the restaurant, which is, like Rick said, isn't good or bad, it's just the perception of what people think as to what, and what I thought right off the bat, as opposed to what it is. You know, either, either be, be great. Um, the, um, the, the other thing about the, the betterment fees, you know, I think you kinda hit the nail on the head, it's a deal breaker. You know, so that, that really has to be resolved, because I imagine you want it resolved as well, because I would imagine if the landlord gets hit with an additional hundred thousand dollar fee, that some of it's gonna be passed on to you on the rent, and then does the whole business model work anymore? So, um, I think I support the idea of a restaurant going in there. Um, like I said, Green Bush could use it, but until we get that resolved, I think I would be a little hesitant in going forward and giving you the liquor license tonight. As, as Sean had mentioned as well, you know, sometimes people not showing up is a good sign, and sometimes they just don't know about it. But when it shows up in the papers on Thursday, um, you know, it, it, it creates some interest, and, and then people show up in support or in, or not in support at a rate of time. Um, so I would, I would probably recommend we wait two weeks to our next meeting before we actually vote on the license, and see if we can get the betterment thing resolved, and see if we give people another opportunity to come to the floor and, and voice any opinion on it, and then go from there. Did you have?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, um, just address a couple of issues. First would be a procedural. I don't know how many licenses, liquor licenses, licenses are available in the town, or whether they're first come, first served. What is that, what does the delay do in terms of holding this license for, um, Backyard Burger Bar?
I think there's one license left in the town, and, um.
Does the delay affect that?
Well, there's no one on the agenda for Thursday to deal with that license, so, you know, as of two minutes, we could put you on the agenda and, and you would be, you know, the first, first in line for it. Obviously, I don't, I don't believe it's legal for us to hold the license. But, you know, we could, Sheila, we could put on the agenda right now for the twenty-first, and there's no one else pursuing it at that point in time.
Secondly, as far as, um, parking and traffic is concerned, um, we needed, um, by right to provide, I believe it was thirty-four spaces, and we provided, uh, twenty additional spaces. So, um, I, I think, um, we've more than addressed that issue. Our engineer, um, was able to, um, configure it so that we had in excess, I believe, of fifty-six spaces, um, available on the site. And, um, we have a great site plan that was worked out that allows for more than adequate parking, knowing that we had to keep people off the driftway, uh, in the, in the event of an overflow. Uh, traffic-wise, there was a concern, uh, by town planner about the entrance to the, um, President Raymond's, uh, parking lot. And, um, we reconfigured it to their satisfaction. Uh, we've changed it to a ninety-degree angle instead of, uh, like a one-fifty, so that, uh, it's, there is now a sight vision in both directions on the driftway of, in excess of three hundred feet. So we have good visibility. Uh, we put in a request to the DPW that, um, there'd be some clearing along the sidewalk that was provided between our site and the, um, and the train station, because there's a lot of overgrowth there. And if in fact we can, uh, in, in conjunction with the, uh, DPW get that cleared, um, we can have an even better sightline if we do some, some maintenance there. Um, we would like to state that we went through, uh, planning board, zoning board, and conservation, all in single meetings, and received approvals, um, from all of those committees.
That's good.
Single meeting, one time, um, and unanimously. There was, there was no dissent among any of those, those boards. They were all in favor, um, of what we're doing. Uh, neighbors were notified, certified mail for all of those meetings. As, as Sean mentioned tonight, um, there is not a big re, at, there is no adverse reaction at all in the neighbor, in the neighborhood. We, we personally canvassed, we've talked to all the neighbors, everyone is in favor and excited about what we're doing.
Did any of them show up at any of the other meetings?
One.
Wow.
We had one, we've only had.
Good.
Aside from you, we've only had one neighbor.
Mr. Cable.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I just briefly wanted to say, all of the points going to the zoning board, planning board, conservation, caring about the business model here. I just wanted to add two cents, I've just, I've known Joan Wilson for about two decades, and if neighbors were concerned, she had the ultimate manner of being very professional, running a terrific establishment. Uh, John already talked about Riva and his, and whatever. So, but just knowing her personally, I didn't know they were coming tonight, uh, but it just, it put my two cents in that you've heard about the business model and all, all the planning, zoning issues on a personal level. Just, Joan is an excellent person.
Thank you. I just had, uh, two quick questions. Uh, Joe mentioned a dance, or somebody mentioned a dance studio as well. Where is that going exactly?
That's going in the front of the building, um, where the actual retail floor of the paint store was. It's the DeValle Dance Studio from Situate Harbor that's, um, relocating to the front of the building. And then the back, two sections of the building will be occupied by the Back, uh, Backyard Burger Bar.
So the entrance will be on the side, if you drove past the building?
Correct, it'll be along.
So you'll actually park in the front, walk past the dance place in, in the, in the side?
There'll be a walkway along the side of the building that will, we will construct, uh, with a very nice entrance to the restaurant.
And one of the quicker, you keep saying "we," so I just didn't know. Did you have, did you have some sort of ownership in the restaurant as well?
No, no, no.
No, so it's just your restaurant, your building?
Correct.
Right. Any other questions? So are we in agreement to just put it on the agenda for the twenty-first? And if you can try and get that resolved with Al, um, and obviously it'll come before us, we'll be in the loop there. Um, yes, Sean.
Joni, do you know why we're doing that? And I, if, if you're not real clear, I just wanna tell you that, because people may have waited years and years to get tied into the sewer. And by, if some, you know, someone comes along and uses a lot more capacity, that might mean that someone else cannot get connected. And for a long time, we'd have to sit here and, and listen to their situation, why we couldn't tie them in, because we didn't have the capacity, and we had priority districts and all that stuff that were really DEP, you know, held a gun to our head, that we couldn't really allow any more flow into the, into the treatment plant. So I think that's, you know, that's where we're coming from. Am I right, Joe? I mean, for many years.
Very close, yeah.
It was the hardest thing to sit here and say, I'm sorry, we can't tie your house in, you know, and they'd have to build tight tanks and all that stuff, but.
Well, even more than that, it's the law. It's the state law. Al's just literally taking it, and John, you can, you know, just taking it right from the law that you have to pay the betterment based on the number of usage. There's a state formula for it. It was written up here somewhere. Sixty-something seats equals nine usages. You paid for one and a half, you owe seven and a half. So that's.
I believe it can be addressed by volume as well. Um, and that's the, the approach to it.
So you've got two weeks to try and figure it out.
So move to, um, postpone hearing for two weeks.
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye. The most.
Thank you guys for coming in.
See you in two weeks.
You know, we'll be, we'll be able to pick up where we, kind of where we let off. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, which is the, uh, alcohol compliance violation.
I think, is this just a procedural of whether or not there is, um, a vote based on the information submitted?
I think we can talk about the penalty as well.
Okay.
If I could ask you two just to go out there so the next people can.
No, I don't think we should.
Hey.
Talk penalty.
You don't think we should?
I don't think so, procedurally. I think.
Yes, if you can come up here, please.
I'm just reading the action sought, Tony. Tony?
Yep.
I'm just reading the action sought on the blue slip. And the suggested motion. And so I would, I would.
Definitely not get into.
Because we don't have facts. And there hasn't been a.
Is that the way you read it as well?
Go ahead, repeat.
That it's, it's just, it's just a motion to hold a hearing?
Hmm, yeah, yeah, I think that's what we have to do.
Is that right, Chief?
Yes, do you have a copy of the police report?
Mm-hmm, yes.
But I, I guess the question here is, the motion is just to hold a hearing, that this actually is not the hearing?
Exactly, tonight is supposed to be just a, uh, discussion of the situation and the discussion.
Determine whether a violation occurred.
Let me, let me suggest this. Uh, information has been submitted to us from the police, uh, Brian, uh, Chief Brian Stewart, um, from Lieutenant W. Michael Stewart concerning alcohol compliance checks. Uh, we've also received an incident report, um, concerning, uh, their compliance checks and potential violators of, of it. Um, and consequently, information has been put forward on one, um, one establishment that may, or allegedly, um, isn't, was in, failed during those compliance checks. Um, I think the board's job tonight is to determine whether or not, based on the information submitted to the board of selectmen, whether or not, uh, the board should hold a liquor license violation hearing for any non-compliant establishment, as a result of the compliance checks on August sixth. Personally, from reviewing this information, I for one believe that there is enough information sufficient to be able to hold a hearing, and I would suggest that the board should hold a hearing, um, either at its next meeting or the meeting thereafter. Um, so that's my position on it.
Mr. Murray?
What he said.
Agreed.
Okay, um, do you two wanna say anything?
I thought we were here for a hearing.
Yeah, that's what we thought.
You're not, no.
Okay, so tonight is really just the procedure of us looking at the information that we've been given to decide whether there's enough information to actually hold a hearing, and what, it seems like the tenor of the board is to hold the meeting, so we will do that, gather more information, and that, at that point in time, we'll actually have back-and-forth conversation discussing it. What I would suggest is that if you could swing by Town Hall and get, I don't know if you have a copy of the guidelines that we use for liquor violations, at least you'll have that handy so you can see that as well, and, um, and then you can.
And the information supplied to us, they should have.
That's all public documentation too?
Yeah, 'cause we don't have any of that.
Yeah.
So you can get all that as well, um, and then we'll discuss it in detail at, at a further meeting. Before I set the date, I wanna sit down with Sheila and see what, what this, what the load looks for the next couple of meetings.
Maybe, um, yeah, we should see what the load looks, and it might take a certain amount of preparation time. So I personally would be good with not necessarily our next meeting, but maybe after that. But we don't wanna let this linger either.
If, if I may, I know that we have a suggested motion. Um, Sheila, was that something that, that you concluded we needed to do? Or Chief, was that something you needed to do? For purposes, it seems like we need to set a specific date, but in the past, I don't recall that, other than giving ample notice to the alleged offender, and then providing, I think, uh, notice in the newspaper of it, creating a hearing. Is that correct?
We have to authorize.
Okay. Okay, alright. So that, for your benefit, get the information, and then follow up with the, um, board of selectmen for the benefit of finding out when the hearing. We'll, we'll inform you, I think we, we have their information.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll certainly inform you, plus we have to post it in the newspaper. Alright.
You got our folders?
Yes, we did.
Got you mercy.
Thank you. So just, just so we're all on the same page, our next meeting is Wednesday, the twenty-first, and our meeting after that is Tuesday, October fourth. Just to, so y'all know what, what dates are implied.
You couldn't make Tuesday.
Oh, that's, oh no, that's in September. 'Cause, uh.
I'm here on September.
Someone's gonna be back on vaca, from vacation then.
Right, that was the.
Is that you?
No.
Again?
No. I'm a professor, I'm always on vacation.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
Uh.
Okay.
Do we?
Wait one sec.
I hate to even bring it up, but the October fourth, we're, we're supposed to be in Disney with our kids.
That's, go to Disney.
I hate to even say it.
Go to Disney, this is why I mentioned the dates.
I know, I don't like to.
We were dreading it, you have no idea. Right, we said October fourth, I'm like, oh my god.
No, well, we can, we can, we can make a motion with a date to be determined later.
You just have to have ten days notice, so.
Move the board of selectmen vote to hold a liquor license violation hearing for a non-compliant establishment on a date to be determined.
Different name, established, oh no.
I'm just reading, man.
Okay.
Date determined later.
Second?
Second by Mr. Norton. Uh, further discussion? All's favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. So we will not make it on October fourth.
Oh.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're the one without me anyways.
That was the plan.
Here, take this.
Enjoy Disney.
Take that stuff, Alex.
I love Disney.
Alright, now you have it, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to item number five, other business. Anyone have any other business? Talked about the storm, that's been probably the.
I got a few. I might as well start. Um, I was pretty quiet during the summer. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the DPW. They ended up doing the, uh, DPW Day, I think it was, uh, a week ago, before the storm. Touch a truck would be a way of putting it, but they brought out all of the new equipment to show and demonstrate to the town, as well as to the kids that could get on the trucks, take a look at them, backhoes, um, bobcats, skid steer loaders, dump trucks, the salt brine truck, you know, uh, the lawnmower, you know, the, how, how does the town mow lawns? Um, I just thought it was a great opportunity, uh, put forward by the, the town again, to try to open up, um, for everybody to take a look at the new equipment that we've purchased, uh, that the town uses, as well as for kids to take a look at it. And I, it was well-received. Uh, they went out with popcorn, and I commend them all for doing it. It's a great opportunity, again, for the town, employees, and for the townspeople to, to appreciate what they have. And, um, you know, I spoke with, um, Kevin Cafferty, and of course, I said, jeez, Kevin, you know, you should think about, uh, doing the same thing when we complain that we need to buy a new truck because the truck's broken down. He said, that's exactly what they're gonna do. So for all the adults who, you know, before, uh, we end up getting capital improvements, we're gonna do another rusta truck so you can take a look at it, and so you can appreciate why, when the town says we need new equipment, sometimes why we need it. But, uh, that was number one. Uh, the second thing I wanted to say was, um, you know, I want to thank everybody who, uh, came to both on Saturday, the parade down in Hummerock, the Horribles, um, as well as the.
well as the parade in, uh, Sand Hills, which was the, uh, Sand Hills, um, Labor Day Parade, which was known as the Horribles. I don't know why there's discrepancy between the two, but, um, I wanna thank the police and the fire department for participating and doing it, for all the people who came out. Um, it's a great opportunity for the town to experience Americana. It's a small parade put together by people themselves who enter things and it's just a, it's a piece of, you know, uh, the uni- uniqueness that this town has. And, um, I have to tell ya, uh, it was well-done, well-received. I also thank the American Legion, they went down in Hummerock and hung flags, uh, in preparation for it. Uh, they've also done it for Front Street, uh, during the Fourth of July, those flags came down because of the hurricane. They took them down before the hurricane, but, you know, again, it just shows you how various segments of our, our community work together to make our community a better place to live here. Um, and the other thing I was going to say was, um, you know, with respect, I, I mentioned the Situate Beach Association, the Hummerock Improvement Association, there are, there are like nine beach associations up and down this coast, uh, whether in First, Second, Fourth Cliff, Third Cliff, uh, Minnit, Egypt, um, you know, Sand Hills or, or down on, uh, Hummerock. It's just amazing, if you live in these communities, you should get involved because they do an awful lot. And the other, aside from all the fun things and the, the kids events and, um, family events that they do during the summer, they also instrumental in trying to help people in preparation for storms. So if you live in those vicinities, you really should get involved because they have a huge information source before you lose your electricity, um, to really find out what's going on with a storm, what's the current status, information you may need to try to batten down the proverbial hatches, help yourself and, and when to get out. So, um, a great opportunity, a great resource for people Situate to take advantage of and highly recommend, uh, participating and/or joining them. Um, it brings me-
Why don't you, I know you're affiliated with that one if you wanna-
Oh, this one here? Um, I, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna get that one in a second. I still got more. Um, I feel like Rick Murray here, um-
I appreciate you saving up all your other business for me.
I didn't expect, that's what I said, I thought you covered-
First night back.
Um, I was gonna say, um, one other, one, two more things.
Hang in there, Joe.
Um, you know, um, and I didn't get the event, but the, uh, the Lighthouse is celebrating its two-hundredth anniversary. I know it's this month and I don't have a date, meant to ask with Dave Ball, but people, if you're interested in participating in the, uh, Lighthouse Centennial, it's gonna be at the Barker. Um, again, it's a part of the "Don't Give Up the Ship" in our town's three-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary. Um, and finally, um, on a more somber note, I also realized, um, a few weeks ago, that, you know, we're coming up to the tenth anniversary of September eleventh. Um, I was kinda stunned by the thought, uh, that it's been ten years, as I'm sure every board member here feels the same way. Uh, this town is actually putting on two events, um, the, both Sunday, one's at the high school in the afternoon, but the one that I wanted at least to tell people about is the event that's happening at the football field, uh, here at the high school at nine-thirty on Sunday. Both the, uh, police honor guard as well as the fire honor guard and members of this board, along with the Situate and Cohasset football team, will be putting on a ceremony or commemoration, rather, of, um, those people who, uh, had perished, those people who've sacrificed and those people who continue to suffer, uh, from September eleventh, uh, in which, uh, even Situate lost one of its, um, um, one of its, um, individuals who grew up here, uh, Mr. Roach. So I, I would highly recommend for anybody out there, if you're not doing anything, if you're not going to church, come on down to the football field, uh, do homage, uh, to that terrible event, um, by participating in a, an event that remembers, uh, all those people who suffered, all the people who have worked so hard and, um, I, again, I, it's the nine-thirty at the, uh, football field at the high school, so. Aside from that, Mr. Chair, that's, that's all I have.
Good job. Good job. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, first day of school. It's always a great day, always an interesting day, pouring rain, but, uh, I just, once again, uh, as you all know, I got four kids and I'm very impressed with the organization shown by the schools. Got the bus passes fine, we got the letters of who, what teachers you're in, and then like one minute after the letters were delivered, all the text messages and phone calls started coming as the kids were calling around to find out who got what teacher and all this sort of thing. But it's just a very impressive thing and it's a, it's a, uh, it's a great day to see and the school bus came right on time despite the pouring rain and, uh, kids came back with all their books, some happier than other kids. But, uh, anyways, I just wouldn't wish everybody in the schools and in the town a, a very good school year as we, as we start this off. That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Right.